Good morning. We will call to order the December 17, 2024, Blue Earth County Commissioners Meeting. Those who are able, please join us for the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, from their God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two on the agenda is the agenda review. Mr. Meyer, please.
Mr. Chair, there are just one minor adjustment to item number, well, it's tab 17, the 2025 budget. We did set a revised resolution in front of the commissioners. We just had a typo on that form. So other than that, the agenda is unchanged.
So the numbers are all complete or correct as they were put out, but the total up on the top was the only...
Yeah, in the narrative portion, the dollar amount didn't match the dollars below, and so we've corrected that now.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve as amended. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The agenda is approved as changed. Item number three, tab number one on the agenda is the County Ditch 78 final hearing. Mr. Meyer, would you review the agenda, please?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Seeing no changes, ask for motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The agenda is approved for the County Ditch 78 final hearing. It's no secret to many in this room to know what year I graduated or to know what some other people here are born. That's 78. I am a landowner on this ditch, so I will recuse myself from voting on, at this hearing. Okay? Craig, please, start us off.
Okay. As far as jurisdictional documents, we had a land information meeting on November 13, 2024. Hearing notice was mailed on November 20, 2024. Notice was posted for this hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse located at 204 South 5th Street, Mankato, Minnesota. Notice of a public hearing was also published in the Mankato Free Press for three consecutive weeks. Part of this will be, in addition to the order establishing, if that happens, if it's established, there will be a resolution to finance. Reading the DNR, I guess next thing I'll do is I'll read the DNR Commissioner Advisory Report as the record is required by statute. DNR from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Ecological Water Resources, Region Four, out of New Ulm. Regarding the final engineers' report for improvement of Blue Earth County ditch number 78, branch one. Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, thank you for the opportunity to review the final engineers' report for the proposed Blue Earth County ditch 78, branch one improvement project. The advisory report commissioned by the Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources aims to provide expert analysis and recommendations in accordance with the guidelines specified in the Minnesota statutes 103 E. 301. Your consideration is greatly appreciated. Overview: Blue Earth County ditch 78 is a drainage system that covers 9,420 acres, primarily in Garden City and Vernon Center Townships. The main ditch flows northeast to the unnamed stream classified as a public water by the DNR. The current improvement petition focuses on a 435-acre portion of the watershed, which consists of gently rolling agricultural land with an elevation difference of 28 feet in the project area. Notably, no known wetlands are within the one mile of the improvement zone. In 2018, part of the branch one and its laterals were improved, including installing larger tiles to enhance drainage capacity and modify the ditch bank for additional water storage. Branch one discharges into an open channel ditch classified as a public water course. The current petition seeks to extend these improvements to the remaining portion of branch one tile continued from where the 2018 project left off. The final engineers' report proposes upgrading a section of the existing branch one tile from 18 to 24 inches to enhance water management and drainage efficiency in the system. Number one, the survey report status. The following is the analysis of the survey report conducted by the DNR. Point one, current and potential flooding characteristics of the property in the DNR project or system downstream for the five, 10, 15, and 50-year flood events in this under 103 E. 015 subdivision 1.4. The DNR's analysis of the outputs from the hydroCAD model provided by ISG along with the data published by the FER yields the following evaluations. The proposed project's no increase of peak flow rate was observed during storm events with the five, 10, 25, and 50-year return periods compared to an existing conditions of the county ditch 78 outlet. However, the report did not compare the flow velocity and the volume at branch one and county ditch 78 outlets. The pond node 45P on the road elevation is 9, 9, 8 feet based on the LiDAR data. Well, the model output indicates the peak elevation as 9, 9, 9.53 for a 50-year storm event. This suggests that the overtopping could occur during a 50-year or storm event, larger storm event. As a result, protective measures of the outlet structure and the proposed storage ponds are necessary to prevent potential overtopping and associated flooding. The pond node 45P, the existing culvert is 380 feet long. It is extended to 1,900, excuse me, 1,096 feet in the proposed scenario. Please explain the reason for the difference. The pond node 45P, the slope of the existing culvert is .0012, while the proposed condition is .0020. However, the report indicates that the slope of the existing and proposed plans is the same. Please explain the discrepancy. The hydrologic soil in the watershed of CD 78 is primarily classified as CD. The model applied a curve number of 75, which is too low for this region of, for B, C, and D soils groups. The CN curve number should be over 85. This area predominantly consists of silty clay loams supported for the need of an adjusted curve number. The pond nodes 45P and 44P, the final routing parameter is set to two for existing and three for the proposed conditions. A consistent approach and recommenda, is recommended. Therefore, selecting either two or three for both existing and proposed conditions is advisable. For future reports, please include a table summarizing accurate peak outlet flow, total volume, and velocity for all storm events for easy comparison. This will be more effective than directly copying and pasting the model outputs into this report. This is a DNR request for making any permit decision that will be required for all projects being reviewed for permit considerations. Next point, alternative measures to reduce potential impacts under 103 E. 015 subdivision 2.2, 1 and 2, and the adequacy of the outlet for the drainage project. The outlet stability is essential for determining the adequacy of an outlet and there, and whether a project can proceed. However, the current elevation by the DNR lacks sufficient data to accurately assess the adequacy of the county ditch 78 and branch one outlets. Based on the information provided in the report and the model, the DNR cannot definitively determine if the outlets are adequate. The DNR intends to assess the adequacy of outlets two years after the improvements have been completed. If any instability or detrimental impacts on the downstream water are identified after the fact permit may be required to address these project-related impacts. Two, the proposed project is of public benefit or utility under 103 E. 015 subdivision 1. Based on the analysis of hydraulic and hydrologic data and the impact assessments for the proposed option of the public waters, the Department of Natural Resources is unable to confirm the existence of a public benefit or utility under the proposed conditions. Number four, the public waters work permit requirement will be decided. The conditions or need for a public waters work permit will be determined based on the DNR assessment conducted two years after the construction is completed. If sufficient erosion of the channel beds or banks is identified, an after-the-fact permit may be required. This decision to require a permit will be based on the observed adverse effects such as bed and bank erosion at the outlet locations, especially at the county ditch 78 outlet. DNR will review photographs and field data documenting conditions for the 78th outlet to the unnamed public water course. If you need, if you need help ensuring your project meets the criteria outlined in the public works permit rules, please get in touch with the area hydrologist Katie Wigan at katiewigan@statemn.us. Five, the DNR's policy on add-ons and extensions in county ditch improvements. The DNR requests that the modeling and design of drainage projects consider all potential future additions or extensions to the existing drainage system. This will help determine whether a public waters permit is required and what mitigation members, measures are, may be necessary. Recently, some drainage projects in Blue Earth County have included previously planned branches but left out the original project due to the landowner opposition, which has since changed. To prevent the issue in the future, all proposed drainage improvements should be evaluated and included in the preliminary engineer support from the start of the project. If an extension or branch segment improvement is proposed and was not included in the original drainage improvement project evaluation, a comprehensive 2D model such as Infoworks ICM will need to be developed and/or updated for the entire drainage project. The holistic review for potential impact and approved thoroughly reevaluates improvements for the whole system rather than focusing solely on the additional branches or extensions as standalone impacts. Based on this reevaluation need, the public waters or work permit may be required for such proposed improvements or drainage system where the public water impacts are expected due to the project. Additionally, the DNR does not support the significant proposal changes between the preliminary engineers' report and the final engineers' report phases. All potential practices and proposals must be included and designed for review within the revised preliminary engineers' report. If significant project changes arise, the DNR will request a resubmission for the revised preliminary engineers' report to accommodate these modifications and ensure our review and comments are consistent with the most recent preliminary engineers' report revision. Please send a response to this letter and revise it. Final engineers' court meeting minutes and findings of fact and order issued by the Drainage Authority regarding this proposed improvement to the DNR when they becomes available. Please submit these documents or any questions about this letter to the regional email at regionfourdrainagednr@stateofminnesota.us. This is from signed Todd Colander, EWR Southern District Manager. Okay, next, we'll go on to the memo here. This hearing is about a petition improvement to county ditch 78. The purpose: The Blue Earth County ditch 78 watershed is approximately 9,200 acres in size and located in Vernon Center Township and Garden City Townships. A petition for improvement of branch one was received on May 30, 2023. On July 11, 2023, the Drainage Authority appointed Charles J. Brandl as, excuse me, engineer of ISG to prepare detailed survey report. Mr. Brandl submitted the detailed survey report to the property in Environmental Resources Department on September 5, 2024. The hearing is for the proposed, is for the final approval of the project. The board will be determining if all statutory requirements have been met. If so, the board will order the establishment of the improvement as found in the attached draft of findings in order.
Okay, we've heard the jurisdictional documents and notices as well as reading the DNR advisory report. That would be appropriate to have a motion and a second to accept those jurisdictional documents.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carried jurisdictional documents in the DNR advisory report are accepted into the ruling record. We're at item number four. I'll ask the appointed engineer to present the engineer's detailed safety survey report. Good morning.
Good morning. Again, Chuck Brandl with ISG.
Jacob Beeler with ISG.
So we're going to go through the presentation. We may skip a few things. We've had multiple landowner meetings on this project. I want to remind everybody that this project, I'm just going to go to the map, is a continuation of an improvement that was completed back in 2018. There was a small section of public tile that was not improved at that time. Landowners in the system petitioned to extend that, so we're talking about 1,000 feet of tile that dumps into an improvement that was sized for this area, a storage basin that was sized for this area, and a model that was included back in 2018. We did not redo the model because the model had been set up at that time to include this. We've designed the storage area already, and it seems to be working fairly well. So we have a slide on DNR comments, but I just kind of wanted to address that at the beginning, that a lot of this was designed, and we did meet with DNR staff back in 2018. The model was acceptable at that time, so we didn't feel like we should spend the money to redo it. So I'll let Jacob run with this for a little bit here.
Yeah, for sure. So just a little bit of background on this. CD 78 primarily lies within Garden City and Vernon Center Townships. The entire watershed is a little over 9,000 acres. The area that this improvement will drain is a little over 430 acres. Throughout the entire watershed, there's about 130 feet of fall. Soil types are CD, excuse me, there's a lot of clay in the soil, relatively slow infiltration rates, and it's predominantly agricultural land. Chuck had kind of shown this map a little bit up to this point. Again, the areas in purple, the purple tile in branch one. This is the 2018 improvement. This was sized for half inch per day drainage coefficient and achieved five feet of cover depth. The orange boundary you can see is open channel storage. So this is an area where, at that time in 2018, the channel was over widened and a control structure was built to provide a measure of storage for branch one being the present improvement and future potential work. Here we can see an elevation map. You can see areas in white and red are generally the high areas. Areas in green and blue are generally the low areas. This watershed predominantly flows from the southwest to the northeast.
One other note, there has been a culvert that was replaced by Blue Earth County last year, and that has more than adequate capacity for the system. I just, that was double-checked. I got to do a review on that. Just the system has had some significant review.
So bit of history on the system. The CD 78 system was officially established as CD 78 in 1944. Prior to that, it kind of consisted of four other systems, being CD 13, CD 33, Vernon Center Township ditch number one, and an existing private ditch. So all of those were merged in 44 into a singular public system. There have been subsequent improvements to the system in 1948, 1950. Portions of some of the open diction system was converted to tile. And then, as we said in 2018, about 6,100 feet of branch one was improved and a storage area was included. This is a photo from back in 2018 or 19 when that storage was constructed. You can see where the ditch was over widened. I believe this is a view from the downstream end.
Yep.
So looking at existing capacities, we can see here, numbers in red is what was improved in 2018. So this starts out as a 48-inch, necking all the way down to a 24-inch at the beginning of what is the presently proposed improvement. As you can see, this all achieves about a half inch per day drainage coefficient or 0.5, and it's really just this last segment of the public tile, which remains at a .21 inch per day drainage coefficient. Currently, this area has about two feet of cover over the pipe, which is not desirable from a longevity standpoint.
Really, it probably should have been replaced back in 2018, but the petition ended at a property line. We had to stop where the petition ended.
So looking ahead to this, this present design, kind of finalizing what was done, the proposed design would consist of a few things. First and foremost, like the previous improvement, we would achieve five feet of cover depth. It would size it for a half inch per day drainage coefficient, which is industry standard for this area. We ensure that the outlet remains adequate for the system. Look at alternative BMPs as necessary. And then finally, we look to see that the cost benefit analysis, being that benefits exceed the net cost of the project. So getting into the proposed design. So getting into the proposed design, this is an upsize from 18-inch to a 24-inch for about 1,100 feet. So we'd be going from a .21 inch per day drainage coefficient to a 0.52 through that upsize, and we achieved that five feet of cover. Here you can see on the map, again, the tile in purple is the previous improvement and the tile in green is the presently proposed improvement. This would extend from that property line we had mentioned, just south of the East-West Road, I think it's 150th Street. So again, about 1,100 feet of tile sized to the capacity of the downstream tile. Following this improvement, the existing public tile would be abandoned adjacent to where the proposed tile would be installed. This would simply function as a private header to whichever landowner is currently utilizing that line. A little bit on storage here, so the existing Branch One storage is located in Section Three of Vernon Center Township. Again, this is essentially just an over widened ditch which allows additional storage capacity beyond what was presently there, and this was sized for the full Branch One watershed at the time. Looking a bit into modeling, again, like Chuck had said, we utilized our previously developed model in effort cost savings and as it was previously found acceptable by the DNR in 2018. So this is a HydroCAD model. Data inputs are the same as previous, just ditch, ditch system data being tile lines, ditch, legal grades for those. We use NOAA Atlas 14 rainfall data. So essentially, we already had this model developed and utilized that as our existing or ASIC as constructed model and just modified it for the proposed improvement.
And we did cover this at the PER and PER hearing and determined that the outlet was adequate at that point, and the project hasn't changed at all from the PER, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. So a bit of the modeling results on this, so this Branch One improvement is very far up in the watershed. Storage was already implemented to account for this. So this doesn't result, and at the system outlet, there is no alteration to peak outlet flow rate and no measurable alteration to outlet volume. For the 5, 10, and 25-year event, there's a very minor uptick on the 50-year event. So very minimal changes. So with that, we believe that the outlet is still adequate. Looking a bit into project costs.
Yeah, I can cover that. We did look at separable maintenance as part of the system. To replace the line that's there would cost about $88,000. Now that line's only two feet in the ground. That really isn't advisable. To improve this line is $108,000. That includes some road authority cost for the township to cross the road. When you look at that difference in cost, it's about $19,000. The benefits, which Mr. Ringquist will go over, is about $32,000. So you can see that the costs are less than the benefits, thus the project meets the requirements of the statute. So I'm just going to skip over this section because we've covered a lot of this with landowners. We did look at a multi-purpose drainage management plan. We already have storage built into the system. We will use water quality inlets at the road crossings. For the DNR comments, we did put a summary letter of those and did submit that, just very briefly summarized them. We did a model back in, I mean, we started it back in 2016. That was approved in 2018. We feel that a lot of the comments are in relation to why, why shouldn't we remodel it? Well, we have a system in place. We have a storage basin in place. It all works. It has been working. So really, most of the comments, I think we've, we've addressed that the previous model was acceptable. So I can go into it line by line. One thing I'll say on that, the request for future additions and extensions, we cannot do that. When a petition comes in, we have to look at what the petition is. As Drainage Authority, as a Drainage Authority, Drainage Authority staff, the Drainage Authority's engineer, we have to look at the project ahead of us. Now, in this case, we did design this for this extension back in 2018, but we can't predict what improvements are going to be coming as part of a system. Somebody could petition for a large storage basin, they could petition to take water a different direction. We don't know that at the time, so I just wanted to comment on that, that that is a very tough comment to, to respond to because we have to take what is legally petitioned in front of us, so. So at this point, we feel the project is cost-effective, practical, feasible, and necessary, and would recommend moving forward with it. Again, it was a project that, yeah, if we had enough petitioners at that time to extend it, it would have been done, but we did plan for it, so. Thank you.
Okay, any clarifying questions for the engineer?
Not at this point.
All right, we'll go to item number five on the agenda. That's the viewer's improvement report.
Map of the watershed up.
My name's Ron Ringquist. I'm one of the three viewers that worked on the improvement of this. We also did the improvement and redetermination of benefits on this project back in 2018. Because this was so recently redetermined and all of the values were updated to 2018, we did not request the board to appoint us to do a redetermination to update these values to the current values. We know land values are up some, but because there was adequate benefit, we felt even utilizing the 2018 values, it would have been an additional cost and would not have significantly changed the assessment role for adding in this improvement. So our report then only addresses that 435-acre watershed affected by the extension of lateral one. We did that based on the 2018 values, and in 2018, we left benefits to all of those contributing properties so that improvement, either through public petition or privately, could be done, and so that when equal benefits were received by all properties within that watershed, at that time, the benefits would be similar to those on the improved system from 2018. So we did that then by making an adjustment in our proximity rate, which accounts for how close a property is to what we deem as an adequate outlet. This project did not extend an outlet to all properties, but available because it brings it 1,000 feet closer. Those on within the, at the end of the improvement, where they directly do have the improved outlet, receive 10% increase in value, and the further away from that improvement you got, it goes down to where some of the properties only got a 1% of their potential improvement because it did not provide an outlet directly to them. Damages for the temporary easement were calculated based on a two-year cash rent basis, one year for the construction, and then a systematic reduction of impact over the next two or three years where full production would not be achieved. So it was a $600 per acre, two-year, or two-year cash rent type of consideration. With those considerations, we've determined that the net benefit for the improvement is $32,378.25, with 3.3 acres of temporary damage for $1,650.
Great. Any clarifying questions on the viewer's report? At this time, thank you, Ron. At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. There's a five-minute time limit. County Administrator will give you a one-minute warning to let you know when you've used the allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to make comments on County Ditch 78 repair report? I'll ask, is there anyone wishing to make comments on CD 78 report? And I ask for a third and final time, is there anyone wishing to make comments for County Ditch 78 repair report? Seeing and hearing done, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring this hearing back to the Drainage Authority Board. If there's no further discussion, a motion in a second to approve the presented detailed survey report and viewer's report, including in the findings, in order would be in order.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair. This has been a project that's been going on for quite a while, so we're all familiar with it.
All right. Are we ready to, ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The findings in orders is accepted, as presented. Okay, do I do the resolution or do you do the resolution?
I guess you've done in the past.
Okay.
Yeah.
With, with that last action, we also have a resolution to finance for this proposed improvement. It would be appropriate for a motion in a second to adopt the resolution to finance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion. We're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The resolution to finance is adopted. This concludes the County Ditch 78 improvement hearing. Thank you. We'll transition into agenda item number four, planning and zoning. People, thank you for those that attended. Next item on the agenda, planning and zoning. Staff are here to present their action items. This is a public hearing. Public comment will be allowed in just a moment. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. There's a five-minute time limit. County Administrator will give you a one-minute warning to let you know when you've used the allotted time. In addition, we, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. I'll ask planning and zoning staff to introduce themselves for the record and introduce the first item.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Garrett Relphing Property Environmental Resources. PC 41-24 is a request from Brian J. Ingles and JT Ingles, which is a request for review and approval of a conditional use permit to construct and operate a 102 by 192 total confinement swine finishing barn. The barn will have a capacity of 2,400 head of finishing swine weighing between 55 and 300 pounds for a total of 720 animal units. The proposed barn will have an eight-foot deep concrete below barn storage pit with 12 months of storage. The total number of animal units after construction will be 720. The property is zoned agricultural and is located in the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 6 Judson Township, Blue Earth County. Staff presented the report to the Planning Commission. The applicant was present and had no comment. Twelve members of the public attended the meeting and provided comment on the proposal. Members of the public expressed concern on traffic and safety issues, screening of the use, ground and surface water impacts, property values, and odor. Planning Commission members and staff addressed comment by summarizing compliance with existing state and county standards. Following the discussion, the Planning Commission voted five in favor and one against to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on findings and conditions recommended by staff. I will mention in the staff report during the Planning Commission meeting, there was a condition that was intended to be included. It was not, and that is the, the barn corners are surveyed to the nearest dwellings. We had some discussion on it during the meeting. It was intended to be in there and was just missed. That has been added since then. So the board action is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you.
All right, you've heard the report. At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment regarding PC 41-24, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak on 41-24? Morning.
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 Jeff Schmidt, 23070506 Lane. Can you read, did you guys all get this piece of paper that we put together? Does he need to read that? The guy that's doing the reading, do you need to read this for everybody or not? Or you just read it yourself?
I'll leave that up to you, Mr. Chairman.
It's really not necessary.
It'll be in the record, correct?
Right.
Okay, well, the residents are concerned of the devaluation of properties, traffic, safety, highway on 68, and excessive, some of my trucks airborne in water quality that runs into the no-name creek that's a spring-fed creek. You guys have the attachment of nine, and that describes all the different reasons. I've circled what I think hasn't really been addressed, which has to do with water quality. There's already one well that we know of in the area that's contaminated from all the hog manure that's been put on the fields in the past. If you go down the line there, there's a no-name creek where this will be set just to the north of that. Do you guys have maps of that? Attachment six. That's where the hog confinement's going to be, and they're going to be spreading manure in that whole area. That's a stream that's a spring-fed stream. It never usually freezes, only in some certain spots, but it flows all the time. That's where all the runoff will eventually get to, even though it's going to be cut into the ground. We understand how that works, but it's going to run through an area and then eventually end up in the rivers where it ends up going to. But, you know, I talked to several neighbors there that like the stream the way it is, and they watch the wildlife that comes and drinks out of the stream. Most of the people that are closer to the other hog farms that are in the area there are overwhelmed with as much manure that's been being spread in the area and the smell. They just can't even go outside. We're further to the north than the other two confinements, but when I, we researched the people to the south, they're just overwhelmed with how much is going on in the area, and a lot of people are, have been sick. There's been air quality issues where they can't go outside. They can't even eat, eat during lunch or when they spread the manure. I think we made a list of the how, how many trucks and things will be, are going on there. That's on that sheet that's, sheet that we provided, but it's a lot of trucks ranging, you know, from in the fall, 190-some units of manure is going to be spread in those existing fields. Property values 20 to 40% less with hog farms that are that close to everybody there, and you can see that people are, well, they're in a kind of a, I was kind of devastated when I went that direction and talked to the people because they say, we don't even know what to do. You know, houses are, can't even live here hardly. We're to the north, but we're going to end up getting all the southwesternly flows that will be coming at us to the north, and those people are in the same general vicinity. There's one, one, Dan, what is his name? Randy, what's his name? Dan Gertz. He, he's right, right to the, right next to it, and he was trying to live there with his family and just to, he didn't even know what he's going to do. He was in tears at the last meeting because
One minute remaining.
Their whole family is wondering what they're going to do, have to move because of the way it's going to be there. MinDOT, we checked with MinDOT. They didn't approve anything there. If you go down all those circles that I have there, all those still have not been provided with answers that really, how do you want to say it? Don't adapt to the neighborhood. But MinDOT hasn't seen anything there, and the, people can't go outside, smell, the runoff. I don't know, I circled the ones that are, are there. The swine flu stuff there, you can read those maps. I gave you those, and we hope that the board can at least take a closer look at it. You know, the safety of the trucks coming and going along the highway there, somebody's going to end up getting killed because there's a poor approach there for that, too.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comments. And last, anyone else wishing to make comments on PC 41-24? I'll ask a third and final time, anyone wishing to make comments on PC 41-24? Seeing and hearing done, I will close the public comment portion. I'm going to bring it back to discussion to the Board. How many comments from the Board? I guess I would, a couple of questions that I've got. This would be required to have a manure management plan, correct?
Correct, yep. One has been submitted. We do a quick review on it, and then it goes through a full review for the... It's called a construction short form permit. That is an MPCA-provided form, not the county issues for the feedlot to be constructed, and a manure management plan is required for that.
And that typically with the hog manure is injected, correct?
Correct. That is what is in the plan for them currently.
Okay. I'm not a farmer, but not a hog farmer, but I did have 795,000 gallons of manure I bought this fall for fertilizer, so well familiar with this. And certainly, safety is always a concern. I think our truck drivers do a pretty good job as they move that, so I appreciate that. Other qualifying questions or other questions from the Board?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair, but I do want to just add a little bit of the discussion that happened at the Planning and Zoning meeting. Of course, I'm the representative there, and there was many more people at the meeting that testified, and there are a lot of legitimate concerns that we've all heard in the past with these hog operations. I appreciate the staff putting the condition in there that it does meet the requirements with a survey, because this one does have a very small envelope that it's going to fit in. These are very difficult decisions for the County Board. We are representing an ag district. This is allowed in the ag area. We unfortunately can't put them in the city, in an industrial area, until we can find a way to deal with the smells and some of these issues. There are always going to be some concerns out there, no matter what we do. So it does fit all the requirements. I will be supporting this today. In the past, we have looked at many different options and managements, probably even before you two got here in this position, but we've looked at some of those filters and all those other different modifications that you should make to hog operations, but just none of them ever came into a policy of any sorts. So until those get changed, we just don't have a lot of options, and I think this will still fit in the ag district. And appreciate the people coming and testifying today and at the other meeting. So that's my comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for representing us at Planning. Other questions or comments?
My only comment is that the building of a hog or confinement barn, does that make a difference whether somebody spreads the manure on their land? Isn't that correct? Because any farmer can spread manure on their land. It doesn't matter if they have hogs or not. In fact, as Chair Pap said, that he doesn't have hogs and he had much manure. So no matter where this confinement barn would be placed in the county, that manure could be spread on that land. Isn't that correct?
That is correct, yep, as long as it wouldn't meet setbacks to dwellings, tile intakes, streams, ditches, things like that.
It's the only comment I had.
Other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the report as recommended.
I would move the resolution be passed, or move the resolution on the recommendations of the Planning Commission.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried, the resolution is approved. Ask staff to introduce the next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Concinine, County Zoning Administrator. The next item on the agenda is PC 42-24. It's a request for review and approval by MEI, Minnesota Elevator Incorporated, for a new conditional use permit to operate an electrical products manufacturer and assembly business within the Light Industry District. This conditional use permit shall replace and replicate PC 36-00. The property is located in the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 5 in McPherson Township. The site address is 19336 607th Avenue, Mankato, Minnesota 56001. At the Planning Commission, staff presented the report. Staff did clarify a change in language to the first condition of approval as it relates to the type of product for impervious surface for the paving of an unimproved parking lot area. The applicant was present and available for questions, and following the discussion, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the County Board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. So the Board action this morning would be passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment regarding PC 42-24, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak to this? Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board. My name is Pete Schuler. My business address is 209 Wood Lake Drive, Southeast Rochester, Minnesota. I'm here representing MEI. I'm also the proposed general contractor, as well as the applicant. We have no issues with the staff recommendations. Here to answer any questions that you might have, we would appreciate your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for attending. Anyone else wishing to make comment on PC 42-24? I will ask a third and final time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 42-24? Seeing done, hearing done, I will close the public comment portion and bring it back to discussion by the Board. Any other clarifying questions or comments from the Board?
I don't have any on this item, Mr. Chair.
Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
I would move the recommendation by the Planning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, the resolution is approved. This will close our, complete our agenda for the Planning and Zoning items. Thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
We will move to item number five, Drainage, starting with tab three. Morning, Mr. Henneker. Please identify yourself for the record.
Morning, everyone. Ryan Henneker, Property and Environmental Resources, Drainage Management Coordinator. My first item is County Ditch 41. We will be doing a redetermination of benefits. Blue Earth County Ditch 41 watershed is approximately 750 acres in size and is primarily located in Vernon Center Township. Current benefits listing was first created in 1916. A redetermination of benefits is required to reflect present-day land values. Action requested for today. At today's meeting of the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we are requesting an order to appoint viewers to complete a redetermination of benefits for County Ditch 41. That's all I have for that one, Mr. Chair.
All right. What are our wishes? You've heard the recommendation?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The viewers' appointment is approved.
All right. Next item involves County Ditch 56, petition to impound, reroute, and divert for portions of Branch 3. Blue Earth County Ditch 56 watershed is approximately 9,400 acres in size and is primarily located in Gardens Center Township. On November 25th of 2024, a petition to impound, reroute, and divert portions of County Ditch 56, Branch 3, was received on behalf of petitioners from Minnesota Valley Lands LLC and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, a Bureau of the U.S. Department of Interior. Drainage Authority Attorney KLR Van Brugen of Rankin Noonan reviewed the petition and determined it met all necessary requirements for this proceeding under Minnesota Statute Attorney Van Brugen also noted that no bond is required for these proceedings as one of the petitioners is a federal agency. Action requested for today. At today's meeting of the Drainage Authority for County Ditch 56, we asked the Drainage Authority to make a motion to accept the filing of petition to impound, reroute, and divert portions of County Ditch 56, Branch 3, on behalf of Minnesota Valley Lands LLC and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. That Charles J. Brando of ISG be appointed as the engineer for the Drainage Authority, that the Drainage Authority staff work with the Drainage Authority legal counsel to obtain signed commitments for easement for the proposed areas of realignment for portions of CD 56 in anticipation of the final hearing on petitions that are non-binding on the Drainage Authority prior to a final order approving the petition, and that upon the filing of the engineer's advisory report, that Drainage Authority staff work to set a hearing date and time and notice the hearing as required under Minnesota Statute 103E. That's all I have for that one, Mr. Chair.
All right, you've heard the action requested. What is your wishes?
I move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried, it is approved, the petition to impound, reroute, and divert, as well as appointing the engineer. Thank you.
All right. Third item involves County Ditch 59. Blue Earth County Ditch 59 watershed is approximately 2,300 acres in size and located in Suresco Township. Current benefits listings was created in 1920, and a redetermination of benefits is required to reflect present-day land values. Action requested, at today's meeting of the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we are requesting an order to appoint viewers to complete a redetermination of benefits for County Ditch 59. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, you've heard the request, the action.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. We will appoint viewers for redetermination of benefits for CD 59.
Very good. Item number four involves County Ditch 63. Blue Earth County Ditch 63 watershed is approximately 1,300 acres in size and located in Decoria Township. A petition for improvement was received on April 29th of 2024. On May 14th, 2024, the County Ditch 63 Drainage Authority appointed Charles J. Brando, PE of ISG, as the project engineer. Mr. Brando was ordered to prepare a preliminary survey report. The preliminary survey report was filed with the Blue Earth County Property and Environmental Resources Department on November 8th of 2024. Action requested, at today's meeting of the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we are requesting the Drainage Authority approve the draft findings in order, setting the date for January 28th, 2025 for that hearing. That is all I have.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion, and I'm assuming this will be set at 9:00 o'clock for part of the board meeting.
Yep, it's in the findings, sorry. I could have mentioned that.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The hearing is set for January 28th, 2025 for CD 63.
All right. Item five, final one for me, is County Ditch 65. Blue Earth County Ditch 65 watershed is approximately 900 acres in size and located in Judson Township. Current benefits listing was created in 1921, and a redetermination of benefits is required to reflect present-day land values. Action requested, at today's meeting of the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we are requesting an order to appoint viewers to complete a redetermination of benefits for County Ditch 65.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The viewers will be appointed for redetermination of benefits for CD 65. That completes our Drainage and Number Five.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan. At this time, I would ask for a motion and a second to recess the board meeting to hold our Economic Development Authority meeting.
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are recessed, and I will call the meeting of the Economic Development Authority to order. First item is to review the agenda. Mr. Meyer, please.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move the agenda.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The agenda is approved as printed. Next, we need to do something with the November 19th minutes. What is your pleasure?
Move the minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The November 19th, 2024 minutes are approved. Next item is the Minnesota Cities Participation Program application. I'll ask Nancy and others to come forward, identify yourselves, and review this item for us. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Bogelman, Associate Director of the EDA, and today I brought with me Nicole Cunningham, and she is the Housing Coordinator. And so you'll be seeing her periodically as we approve different things on the agenda over the years, so just wanted to make sure that you had known her as well.
All right, welcome.
And I just wanted to let you know, too, that we do have Mark Kanz, who is the new Community Development Director. He replaced Paul Vogel, and so he came to join the meeting today and get to know her.
Great, welcome.
The first item that we do have on the agenda is the Minnesota Cities Participation Program, and this is a program that Minnesota Housing manages, and they use tax-exempt bonds authorized by the Minnesota Management and Budget Committee. And it allows us to provide first-time homebuyer loans within the community without having to go separately and bond for the funds. Minnesota Housing can sell these bonds on behalf of local governments to meet local housing needs, and so this is a program that we use every year. Every year, the state goes in to make application for these bonds between January 2nd and January 15th of each year, so they have us fill out this application that we have attached, and it gets submitted with a grant agreement to receive allocation of funding for first-time homebuyers. You'll see in the package here, we do have to have a minimum usage of 50% of the allocation that they give us, but every year we have exceeded that amount. We did kind of give you a history here to show you, the first year we started out was 17. The last couple of years, we've been kind of slower. We've been at 32 and 28, but this year, we actually got up to 49 again, so it's good to see that homebuyers are able to purchase homes in our community. And then I did also provide you a copy of the payment schedules, and you'll see that they do allocate for Blue Earth County just over $1 million, but if you go over to the far side, they actually spend closer to $9 million, so there's a big investment through Minnesota Housing to make homeownership possible in our communities. And then the last page for that as well is just kind of a listing of the homes that were purchased in 2024 and which banks actually participated, so you have an idea of which banks are making a difference in homebuyers at an affordable level. So our recommendation is that you authorize the Executive Director to execute the application of Minnesota Housing for continued participation in the Minnesota Cities Participation Program.
All right, any clarifying questions?
I don't have any, Mr. Chair.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The Minnesota Cities Participation Program is approved. Next item, please.
The next item is a resolution to approve the 2025 Public Housing Capital Fund. The Public Housing Capital Fund budget traditionally has been approved each year with the PHA Annual Plan in the fall. That helps to manage the formula funding for modernization of the Mankato Public Housing Units. HUD has now separated the procedures and adjusted timelines for the capital fund budget to align with the annual operating budget process. The 2025 Capital Fund includes a continued modernization and repair The twenty-twenty-five capital fund includes a continued modernization and repair of the public housing units and site improvements required through the RAD process. This plan will also include the repositioning of the public housing through Section eighteen conversion and the RAD small PHA blend programs. For twenty-twenty-five, the capital fund budget anticipates two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and provides funding for dwelling improvements, appliances, site improvements, and general operations as presented in the attached budget. The capital fund program for twenty-twenty-five has been posted for public comment, and a resident advisory meeting was held on November twelfth, and no comments on the capital funds were received at that time. The requested action is to approve the resolution of the twenty-twenty-five capital fund budget as presented.
Okay, thank you, any clarifying questions?
No.
Okay, this hearing provides an opportunity for citizens to submit comments and recommendations on the proposed plan in a public setting. Are there, at this time, I'll open it up for public comments. Is there any anyone wishing to make comments? Please come to the podium, state your name and address. For the record, comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded, there's a five-minute time limit. County Administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used the allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to make comments? I'll ask again, is there anyone wishing to make comments? I'll ask a third and final time, anyone wishing to make comments on the twenty-four, twenty- twenty-four Public Housing Capital Fund program? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting, bring it back to the board for questions and considerations.
Add on any questions, Mr. Chair?
Okay, it'd be appropriate for a motion and a second to approve, you have a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion?
It's all good.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, it is approved. The next item is the twenty-twenty-five EDA Public Housing Operating Budget for Consideration. Who's gonna do that? You gonna do that one, please?
The Blue Earth County EDA is required by twenty-four CCR five ninety-three-one-five annually to prepare an operating budget and have it reviewed and approved by the Board of Commissioners. This twenty-twenty-five budget has been adopted by the city of Mankato on December second. The operating budget and resolution will be submitted to HUD with the annual operating subsidy request. Attached, you will find the twenty-twenty-five operating budget, a copy of the resolution approved by the City Council on December second, twenty-twenty-four, and the proposed EDA resolution to approve the budget. The public housing budget had total revenues of six hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-four, with staffing expense of two hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four, and other general expenses of four hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and fifty. The Breckenridge Townhome budgets, the public housing total revenue was seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-two, with staff expense of twenty thousand, two hundred and forty-two, and general operating of fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty. The market rate units total revenue of eighty thousand, five hundred, with staffing expense of twenty thousand, two hundred and forty-two, and general expenses of forty thousand, nine hundred and eighty. The Housing Choice Voucher Program budget, total revenue of six hundred and three, six hundred, with staff expense of fifty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-three, and general expenses of five hundred and forty-four thousand, twenty-one, made up of housing assistance payments. The board is asked to approve by resolution the twenty-twenty-five operating budget for public housing as presented.
Okay, you've heard the request, what are your wishes?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion?
Good job.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the Public Housing Operating Budget Resolution is approved. Item number seven on our agenda, tab five, is the Housing Trust Fund Memorandum of Understanding.
So if you remember, Blue Earth County did identify a need to establish a local housing trust fund during the development of the Affordable Housing Action Plan and established an ordinance for an affordable housing fund on August twenty-seventh of twenty-four. The county began the Affordable Housing Trust using statewide affordable aid from the state of Minnesota, and this ordinance set the purpose and intent of a local housing trust fund to encourage and create affordable housing for renters, homeowners, to promote the preservation of affordable housing and to prevent and end homelessness, as well as provide some rental assistance. The Blue Earth County and the city of Mankato desire to cooperatively establish goals and policies and procedures for affordable housing in our Blue Earth County. We've created this memorandum of understanding that's been developed collaboratively, focused on the attention of affordable housing issues, encourage shared information on successful policies and programs, and provides joint planning for the consistent approach to that which will attract public and private resources to develop affordable housing. The purpose of the MOU is to establish and formalize a framework of collaboration and coordination to prove the efficiencies and outcomes related to the affordable housing in Blue Earth County. The MOU establishes the Housing Trust Fund account that will be maintained by the Mankato EDA. All funds received by Mankato and Blue Earth County on behalf of the trust shall be deposited into the trust account. It lays out shared decision-making between both the EDAs and the working of an advisory committee, and the advisory committee will develop an annual action plan, and it will be reviewed and recommended to the EDAs for loans and grants to create, acquire, rehab, affordable housing, as well as to prevent and end homelessness. The requested action is a motion to approve the resolution executing the MOU between Blue Earth County and the city of Mankato for the administration of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Okay, you've heard the request?
Move or approve?
Second.
A motion and a second discussion?
You know, I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I think this whole time that we've listened with the Economic Development Authority, we found that the city of Mankato and Blue Earth County really works as a partnership. A lot of times, people like to put us at odds with each other, but in most cases, throughout the whole year and throughout everything we do, Mankato and Blue Earth County works as strong partners with each other. This comes really true on on housing and issues like that. I think we were very strong, of course, Nancy, you're a very strong part of that, and I appreciate that, so thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Other discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the Memorandum of Understanding is approved. This concludes today's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good day.
We will reconvene the Blue Earth County Commissioners Meeting. We are at item number seven, tab number nine, twenty-twenty-four Assessment Changes. Mr. Manterfeld, are you ready for us?
I'm ready.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mark Manterfeld, Deputy Director of Property and Environmental Resources. I'm here today to report the changes to the twenty-twenty-four assessment since the closure of the twenty-twenty-four County Board of Appeal and Equalization. That was in June. The assessor is required by statute to report changes to the assessment annually. Most of the changes in your packet are a result of special program implementations such as the Disabled Veterans Exclusion, Blind Disabled Exclusion, those things. There's also classification changes in there and homestead status changes, so if somebody received a homestead or lost a homestead. And the majority of the changes that you see here are due to the fact that most of the programs that are special program, property tax programs, their applications actually fall later in the year after the close of the County Board of Appeal and Equalization. So the board does not need to approve these, they've already been implemented, but we do request that you make them a part of your official record by adopting them.
Great, any discussion?
No.
And entertain a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, guys.
Merry Christmas. We are at item number eight, tab number ten, Community Corrections. Morning, John.
Morning.
Please join us and identify yourself.
John Marsalik, Community Corrections Director. All right, I have two items for you this morning. The first is a contracted bed agreement with Carver County. Attached to this memo, you'll find a contract agreement with Carver County for one secure bed per day at the Juvenile Detention Center located at their jail. This agreement will secure one bed per day in detention for the calendar year twenty-twenty-five. The per diem would be two hundred dollars per day. This contract is shared with Nicola County Community Corrections. The total amount of the contract is seventy-three thousand dollars. Nicola County shall compensate Carver County in the amount of twelve thousand dollars, and Blue Earth County shall compensate Carver County in the amount of sixty-one thousand dollars. The agreement was based upon a review of bed days used by each county thus far in twenty-twenty-four. I would respectfully request that the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners approve the contracted bed agreement between Blue Earth County and Carver County.
Okay, you've seen, heard the recommendation?
Move or approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the contract is approved with Carver County. Next, please, John.
On to the next one, it is a contracted bed agreement with Prairie Lakes Youth Programs. Attached to the memo, you'll find a contract agreement with Prairie Lakes Youth Programs for one secure bed per day at their program in Wilmer. This agreement will secure one bed per day in detention and their secure corrections program for calendar year twenty-twenty-five. The per diem for this agreement is four hundred and forty dollars per day, and any cost for unused bed days would be split between Community Corrections and Blue Earth County Human Services. The total amount of this agreement would be a hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred dollars. The agreement includes, also includes prioritize access to the non-secure and group home programs, which are also located under the umbrella of Prairie Lakes Youth Programs. I would respectfully request that the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners approve the contracted bed agreement between Blue Earth County and Prairie Lakes Youth Programs.
Move or approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
Question, is that four forty per day when we use it, or is we have to pay the one sixty upfront?
We would pay, no, we don't pay the one sixty upfront, we pay it each month as we go, so essentially, you're paying per day, that per diem of four hundred and forty dollars, whether or not somebody is there.
Whether or not somebody is there, we're paying it no matter what?
Correct. Yes. I will say, in twenty-twenty-four, to date, we have essentially had somebody in that bed the entire year.
Wow.
So the bed usage really only takes one kind, you could say, a significant event or one kid that requires, you know, that level of programming, and I can tell you that right now, I believe we have, not just in secure, but in secure, non-secure as well, we have, I think, four kids in their program. But we do use that secure bed, you know, throughout the year. It really is hard to predict, you know, the usage, but I can say for this year, we have had somebody in the majority of the year.
Is is there enough beds in Minnesota to cover the usage we require?
You know, we were, we've been in a pinch in the past. This will be our third year utilizing these contracts with Carver and Prairie Lakes, and we really have not had issues since we've had the contracts to make sure we have a bed available to us. That said, we do run into times where you are looking at having to utilize a location that may be less desirable, I'll just say like Tri-County up in Crookston, they have a secure detention facility, and we may need to use that for a short period of time if Prairie Lakes does not have a bed available to us. We're guaranteed our one bed, but there are rare occasions where you may need that bed that's not closer than, you know, someplace up north. Carver's our closest facility, Prairie Lakes is still two hours away, and there are situations where we have to go even further. So we've been able to locate the beds, but sometimes you do have a longer drive for a deputy that has to go up and transport a kid up to Crookston, you know, for a detention stay, and that's that's not desirable at all, which has been, you know, the benefit of having these contracts as well. It also shortens the drive time for deputies and transport officers that have to make these transports, so in a general sense, there's still a shortage of bed space in the state of Minnesota. One of the things at a presentation at the conference last week was they're looking to expand a psychiatric treatment facility in Moorhead, because there's just this ongoing need out there for psychiatric residential treatment facility beds as well, there seems to be a continued shortage of those.
One more question, so it's four hundred and forty dollars a day, that's for one person?
Correct.
We're spending, like, if we have four children or four people up there, four children up there, we're spending four hundred and forty dollars per person?
This this reduced rate that Prairie Lakes gives us is ten dollars less per day than their regular per diem, and so for kid number one, you'll pay four hundred and forty dollars a day. If you have a second kid in this year program, you get four hundred and fifty dollars a day for that per diem. In their non-secure programs, their per diems will be less than that, and so specifically in the secure program, the discount that we receive is a discount of ten dollars per day. So juvenile number one would be at four hundred and forty dollars, juvenile number two would be at four hundred and fifty dollars, and then any other kids that we have in the program are subject to the regular per diems in their non-secure programming or over in their group homes that they run over there as well.
Is that the same with Carver County, too?
Carver County's rates for twenty-twenty-five are going to be, so with our contracted rate, it's an increase from one hundred and twenty dollars a day to two hundred dollars a day. If we did not have a contract with Carver County, we would be charged three hundred dollars per day. So the benefit for Carver County is a hundred dollars per day.
All right, just shows the need for...
Yes, absolutely, you know, and it's been a good partnership with Nicola County for us, you know, they utilize the detention center with Carver County much less than we do, but it still shows that we are getting a fairly significant, you know, decrease in the per diem at two hundred dollars a day by utilizing the contract versus three hundred for non-contracted counties.
Appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you, information. Other questions? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the contract is agreed to. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thanks, John.
We are agenda item number nine, tab twelve, Human Services. Mr. Clausen, please.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I have a number of contracts to bring before you today. One informational item that we can discuss as best we can. The question, Mr. Chair, if you want to take these in sections or one at a time, there are quite a few. So...
That's why I ask.
Renegation from the Administrator?
Historically, we've approved them all at the end, so maybe just work through them.
And I'm okay with that, I would just ask the board members if there's some specific questions or concerns to bring them up as they go through in case we, I don't like to divide the question, so, all right, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First section is Public Health, three items, first of those being the master contract. This is an umbrella contract that really gives us structure for us in our agreement with all contracts that flow through the MDH, through the Department of Health. There is no money attached to this particular agreement, and the individual contracts have the rates in them. This umbrella contract is effective January first of twenty-five through December thirty-first of twenty-nine. The next item kind of goes in step with that, where there's a foundational grant agreement. This is a large agreement that goes under Public Health, under that umbrella that we just talked about. It is a statutory responsibility for our local public health and community health boards to distribute this money as as you all see, best see fit. The combined funding sources increased from four hundred and thirty-one, two ninety-seven to five hundred, five seventy, a sixteen percent increase from last term. It is a five-year agreement as well, January first of twenty-five through December thirty-first of twenty-nine. Third item under Public Health is Child and Teen Checkup. This is something the board has been familiar with, outreach to children ages birth through twenty years old who are enrolled in medical assistance. It really is to ensure proper health and medical services for these these children and their families. The funding for the program twenty-five is ninety thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars, which is a fifteen percent increase. It is based on the children enrolled, and you'll see we went up about five hundred children in twenty-four, so that's what drives the the amount in the contract. The term, January first of twenty-five through December The term, January 1st of '25 through December 31st of '25. The next section is Disability Services. There are some similar contracts with different vendors. The first, Ethical Solutions, Power of Attorney Contract. This is to facilitate financial services for people in need of what we refer to as conservatorship, so that's usually the fiscal aspects of a person's needs to help manage their money and decisions about their, their resources for vulnerable adults. The rate is $52.49 per hour in '25, and then it goes up in '26 to 53.54, 2% increase from those two years. And the contract term is January 1 of '25 through December 31st of '26. The next contract is similar, although it's about guardianship, so guardianship is broader than conservatorship. Usually, it's decision-making in the full array. So what people need for their daily cares, what medical services they might need, the guardian would be involved in, in all of those decisions, not just the fiscal, but also including the fiscal. The guardianship initial cost for the meeting is $500 to set up the guardianship, and then there's a breakout of other pieces that can be added, an updated plan. Decision-making meeting can be held, these are $75 each. The two-year contract, January 1st of '25 through December 31st of '26. Lutheran Social Services, also very similar contract to the one we just went over, Power Attorney Contract, same purpose for conservatorship as the first item under this section, and for eligible vulnerable adults. And the rates for 2025 for Lutheran Social Services is 6102, and for '26, 6224, also a 2% increase. Term is January 1st of '25 through December 31st of '26. And finally, Southern Minnesota Power of Attorney Contract, same purpose. The rates for '25 for Southern Minnesota, $51 per hour, and for '26, 5202, also a 2% increase from '25 to '26. Term, January 1st of '25 through December 31st of '26. The next section is Children and Family Services. Greater Minnesota Family Services provides us the Family Group Decision-Making Contract. This service really is about bringing families and their support people all together at the table and trying to come up with a plan when they're involved in child protection collectively, using all those supports and people willing to help come up with a progress plan. The January, I'm sorry, the term of this is January 1st of '25 through December 31st of '25. The cost is the same as 2024, which is $1,580 per meeting, and it's billed in a two-tier system. We pay 40% of the costs upfront when the referral is made in 60, 60% after the meeting has occurred. We heard John share from Corrections how complicated some of these can be, but we also have a minimum of 10 meetings that we're required to cover. It is not a problem for us to cover those 10 meetings. You'll see the smaller counties listed have a minimum of three meetings each. So we, I think across the board, go over those minimums, but they did that just to float their boat and make sure that they have their costs covered. So that is the Greater Minnesota contract. And then Children's Mental Health, Woodland Center, purchase of service agreement for their Adolescent Crisis Stabilization Services. Again, not completely different in the purpose of what John was talking about with some of our secured detention facilities. These are for acute short-term services. It's not considered incarceration or that it's locked facilities, but there are capacity to serve more severe mental health and behavioral health emergencies that don't meet psychiatric hospitalization criteria. The rate of 2025 will be $700, which is a 3.7 increase, percent increase, and from the rate that was $675. This one also has an additional $3,000 annual administrative fee that goes with that. January 1st of '25 through December 31st of '25 is the term. Carlson Counseling is a vendor who provides us parenting capacity evaluations for families involved in child protection case for the court. So it's really an assessment of abilities for a parent-to-parent. The hope of all those efforts are to complete a plan for reunification. The rates are for a two-year agreement. They have not increased since the last agreement in this contract. The term is January 25th through December 31st of '26. The amount of that parenting assessment is $1,900 per assessment. Next section, Adult Mental Health, one item. Department of Human Services, Behavioral Health Division, Community Support Program. This is our program, which is statutory mandated to provide community-based services to individuals who have serious and persistent mental illness. Those are five diagnoses that fall under that category. This grant is provided to the counties for the years '25 and '26, the total for each year being $330,223. And that is the same amount as the two previous years, which we all know is not always great news because costs go up for this. Mental Health Clinic, Shared Service Agreement with Minnesota Forensic Services. This is Melinda Henderson, for those of you that know her, she's been with us for a long time. We have a shared service agreement with the state for her to provide advanced practice nursing for psychiatric prescriptions in our mental health center. This is a renewal, much likes ourselves, the wages at the state changed somewhat dramatically, and for Melinda in particular, increased from 77.15 to 91.99. It's a 19% increase, and it included general wage adjustment, a range reassignment for Melinda, and her wage was also increased just being a state employee. So all that coupled together with that increase. It is true that this is still within, in line with the other prescribers that we have that are advanced practice-level prescribers. So it doesn't put us way out of bounds, it was kind of our better deal in some of these ways. So it's more commensurate on the term, January 1st of '25 through December 31st of '25. Financial Assistance, we have interpreter contracts, this first one with Lingua One for non-English-speaking clients. No change in the rate for the interpreter services for '25 contract. There was a change for translation services, so when you take maybe a document and need to change the language that it's written in, it was at 50 cents a word, which got to be quite expensive, and so we asked for that to be lowered to 25 cents per word, which is more in line with the standard of that service. It's not used very often, but it can add up quickly when we do need it. Term, January 1st of '25 through December 31st of '25. And South Sudanese Community of Minnesota Contract, also an interpreter contract for Sudanese-speaking clients. To us, they also assist with the applications forms and the interview process through Financial Assistance. $70 for the first hour and $17.50 for additional hours, which is the same as last year's contract. The term of the contract, January 1st of '25 through December 31st of '25. The final action item has to do with our advisory committees. We have Social Service Task Force, Mental Health Task Force as well.
Should we do that separately, baby?
Certainly could.
I mean, we've got 14 contracts and agreements and everything else. Let's not mix Advisory Committee with contracts, if that's okay with everybody?
Yep, second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second discussion on any of the 14?
No, a lot of stuff, Phil, thank you.
Thank you for not bringing it up as we were on it, I appreciate that.
It's a lot.
Sounds like we could vote it all on it at once, are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, those contracts, agreements are all approved now. Let's go with Advisory, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. One other additional action item is, it's under administration for our advisory committees. These are volunteers that agree to represent the community on the Human Service Task Force and the Advisory Committee that meets regularly. The recommended list in your packet shows two, two different sections. The first of those being new appointments, so I will read those, Mr. Chair, and then maybe not read through all the reappointments, because they are people that have been involved in the past, and we're just asking the board to reappoint them. The new appointments are Erin Lehman, District 1, for the Human Service Advisory Committee; Heidi Sampson, District 4, Social Service Task Force; and Jenny Valament, and she is Social Service Task Force. So those, along with the reappointments, would be our request for approval.
We'll do approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Certainly, as part of this, the new appointments, I'm assuming we have some retired. We certainly want to thank them for their service as well.
Yes, sir.
Other discussion? We're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the Advisory Committee and Task Force appointments are approved.
Thank you, sir. We draw the board's attention to the grid on the very back page, I believe, of your packet, but it just shows vacancies. We're always looking for other people, and as the chair said, we do have people coming in from the different committees. So within your district, if you know of anybody, we're always glad to talk to them. Noel Brunder is a great contact for them to call if they have questions, and we can help try to see if it's a good fit for them and for us. Just backing up, I did add, at Bob's request, just informational item about the Minnesota African-American Family Preservation Act. I know at AMC, you heard talk about this. The plan that I understand currently is that Ramsey and Hennepin will be piloting this in this year, and so we'll learn from that. I think what we learn, you know, is subject to the fact that those are really big counties compared to ours. So some of it will apply, some of it won't, they're metro, we aren't, and how that might impact us down the road here in '26. We do have in place, and I think most Commissioners are aware of, the ICWA, the Indian Child Welfare Act, it's been in place for many years. It requires us to just work in concert with the tribes, that's, that's what it does. And so if we have a child that is part of a tribe, we have to show that respect. We go to them first, we coordinate their care, we make sure we basically get their approval for everything we're doing, and we work in concert. I think that concept lays over this, this concept very well. It's going to broaden, you know, children and families of color that identify with the culture, where we're going to be asked to match the services with that culture. It's a really good endeavor, there's no doubt, it's just going to be a lot of extra work. And if you can imagine, especially in our community, there may not be therapeutic outlets or certain types of supports that a family might need, and that means more transportation, more coordination, and more planning. In the end, I think we all can support the idea that it's good to have children and families fit with people that they identify in their own culture, but that is not an easy undertaking. So we'll see how it goes in the metro, and, and we'll learn from that, and we'll certainly keep the board informed of how that is starting to present itself. The costs associated with, of course, with our budget concerns is the big issue, is there's just no doubt that it's going to take more time and effort, and that means staff hours coordinating here rather than providing here. So that's kind of my nutshell. I don't know if there are any questions, Mr. Chair, or-
Well, yes, maybe a question, but first the comment, Bob was right. It came up at AMC every day, I'm not so sure. It did almost come up every session, many times, a lot of concerns. This is going to be extremely costly to, to all the Minnesota counties. One of the things we heard as we looked at policies and things like that, it was referenced, I think, every day of a survey that was done, and we heard anywhere from 22, then it became 41. Some used the number 48 of the Minnesota counties that have completed their survey or questionnaire, where is Blue Earth County? Are we one of the 41?
We are, we're done with the survey, yeah. I, I think my only comment on that is, I think we're, we're kind of shooting in the dark a little bit, Mr. Chair, about how we put those numbers together. And, and like I said to Bob, like, we didn't put any supervisor time in there, is once this pans out, you know, how do we support the work the staff are doing if it becomes more? And how is that money going to look so that we can also administrate the plan, not just provide the staffing hours? So some of those things cause us some concern, even after we submitted, saying, yeah, it's going to, it's going to take more staff time, but it might take more administrative time too, and how do you accurately guess at that? And so we, we took a guess, and we are completed with that, yes.
Thank you for that. And yeah, there was a lot of discussion, a lot of those, a lot of counties that talked about it's what it's going to do, it's going to redirect some, some resources, staff time, to being, doing this and eliminating some of that nice-to-do, and this is another one of those unfunded mandates that has no dollars with it, will be extremely expensive. Other questions or discussions?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays to all of you, yes, good to see you, take care.
We are at item number 10, starting with tab number 13, Administrative Report. Bob, please.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the County Board Minutes for December 3rd.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the December 3rd minutes are approved as printed.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the bills are approved.
Number 15 in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just have informational items for the board today, starting with the resignation of a social worker in choice as assessor, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also had a resignation of a clerical specialist, too, in our drug task force. Then we had a resignation of a 911 telecommunicator. We've initiated recruitment to refill that position. Then we have filled a correctional officer in the jail. And lastly, we had a resignation of a property environmental resources specialist, too. So be happy to answer any questions the board might have about any of those informational items.
Okay, you've seen that, continue.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, in your packet at tab 16 is a resolution that's required by Minnesota statute certifying the 2025 property tax levy. Blue Earth County staff again working on the budget in April of this year. Meetings with department heads were held in June. Work sessions with the County Board of Commissioners occurred throughout the summer, resulting in this proposal are this levy of $47,835,825. This proposed levy is a 6% increase over the levy that was assessed in 2024. I'm recommending the 2025 property tax levy of $47,835,825 be certified to the Blue Earth County Finance Director.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation?
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and seconds, discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the levy is approved.
The next item in the packet is the 2025 budget. As a reminder, we did hand out a corrected version of this resolution. Minnesota Statute 375A.06 requires the county administrator to prepare and submit an annual budget and long-range capital expenditure program to the county board. As I mentioned previously, staff began working on the budget in April and has been reviewed numerous times in work sessions with the county board. As such, I'm recommending the approval of a resolution regarding the 2025 budget, which projects expenditures at $150,737,702.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? And again, like you pointed out, you know, the, the packet on- the packet online is all correct except with the total was not moved up correctly to the top, otherwise all other numbers are correct.
Right, the sentence in the packet that says now therefore be it resolved that the budget they mounted listed there was inaccurate, should match the numbers in the columns down below.
Ah, yes.
Okay, are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the budget is approved, and behalf on the whole board, thank you and all the staff, this isn't a small project, this is many months, we appreciate the hard work, and we got this one approved, so you can start working on the next one.
It does start soon, and thank you for that, but, you know, there was a lot of people that contribute to the development of that budget, and it does take a lot of time and energy, but folks are really good about working through issues throughout that process.
Thank you. Next.
Item number eighteen in the packet is a memo regarding salary adjustments, it's been Blue Earth County's practice to approve general wage adjustments for all non-union employees, supervisors, county department heads, and elected officials that are the same as those that are negotiated with our unions. We have a number of unions that have settled contracts at a three and one-quarter percent general wage adjustment, and so we're recommending that same level effective January first of twenty-five. We also list the proposed county commissioner's salary for 2025 at fifty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-seventeen dollars.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion, are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's carried.
Item number nineteen in the packet is a memo regarding the 2025 per diem rate, each year the county board establishes the per diem rate in the various boards and commissions eligible for those per diems, we're recommending no change to those per diems, so a hundred dollars per day, calculated at sixty dollars per half-day where the start of the first meeting is completed within four and a half hours, increasing to one hundred dollars if it goes beyond that threshold, so same concept or application as has been in 2024.
Hey, you've heard the recommendation?
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion, are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried.
Item number twenty in your packet is a memo regarding per diems for the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment. The crux of this analysis indicates that slight adjustment in those rates is recommended, you'll see that we did survey a number of counties to see what they pay, and it ranges from a low of twenty-five dollars per meeting to a high of a hundred-and-fifty dollars a day plus mileage. We're currently at sixty dollars for one meeting and thirty dollars if there's a second meeting for some of those members that serve both in the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment. We're recommending an increase to seventy dollars for the first meeting and having the second meeting remain at thirty, so going basically from a ninety dollar per diem if there's two meetings to a hundred dollar per diem.
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion, are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's carried.
Item number twenty-one then in your packet is a memo regarding reimbursement policy for meal allowances. We're currently at a reimbursement rate of fifteen dollars for breakfast, twenty dollars for lunch, twenty-five dollars for dinner, and out-of-state, a hundred dollars per day. Staff are proposing an increase of five dollars per meal for all the in-state meals and leaving the out-of-state meal level at a hundred dollars per day, so making that recommendation for the board's consideration today.
Hey, you've heard the recommendation? Your wishes?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And second, discussion, are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number twenty-two in your packet is a memo with some information regarding, information on Public Works Underbody Wash System. This is a system that can be purchased under a cooperative purchasing arrangement, but this is for our wash bay at the new Public Works facility, the cost is at eighty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and forty-six cents, and so recommending approval of this particular underbody wash system.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion, are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's carried.
Item number twenty-three in the packet then is the financial status report for November thirtieth, so the second to the last month of our fiscal year, you'll see our total revenue sit at one-hundred-and-seventeen-point-four million, total expenses are at one-hundred-and-twenty-three-point-six million, so we are in a deficit status at this point. Couple of things to draw your attention to, we have collected the majority of the second half taxes, and so up towards the top, the third line down, the local tax levy, shows that we have collected ninety-eight-point-five percent of our anticipated property taxes. Our transportation sales tax revenue, the next line down, is running about nine percent below last year, still fairly consistent with our budget, just a little bit below our target there, but certainly something we haven't seen in prior years, so we've been on kind of this constant increase in that transportation sales tax line, but it might be a minor indicator of some economic issues in our county. On the plus side, our interest on investments is up seventeen and a half percent from last year, and obviously much higher than we had anticipated when this budget was initially created last year, so very positive returns on our investment. On the expenditure side, our personal services, our salary and benefits are tracking very well with our budget. Contracts and fees line is up considerably from last year, although just running a little bit over what our budget would be, some of that is related to public works contracts, the timing of when those occur compared to the budget are off a little bit, so all in all, not really that surprising to me, we did have a surplus last year, looks like we'll have a bit of a deficit at the end of 2024, based on some timing of payments. The enterprise fund, towards the bottom of that page then, shows total revenues for the Ponderosa landfill at four-point-eight million, expenses sit at four-point-six-five, so just a little bit of a surplus there, that's good considering, you look at the machinery and equipment line, we have one-point-seven million dollars of expenditures there, so good outcome. The second page shows our cash and investment balances, towards the top, you'll see our total available funds at still over seventy-eight million, our six-month target is sixty-two-point-five million, so we're running a little above at this point in that comparison. Down towards the bottom, you'll see our total county fund sit at one-hundred-and-thirty-five-point-six million, which is down about three million from this time last year. Be happy to answer any questions the board might have at this point.
Questions on the financial status report?
Nope, it's good, strong.
All right, anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
It moves us to, again, to item number eleven, Commissioner reports on committee, probably for the last time, Commissioner Brunder, you get to go first.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, after our last meeting, got together and had a planning and zoning and drainage meeting with Bob, Kevin, and Mark Mandarfield, and we just talked about some issues that we have going on out in the rural area, so every couple of months, very informative to us rural commissioners, to kind of keep ahead of some of the projects we got going on. Had our budget hearing that night, which Bob did a great job, I thought it was very well attended by the staff, one person from the public, which, that's okay, it, I would just take that as a mark that we're doing a good job and people don't have to come challenge us and talk with us, and I think we're good about answering questions throughout the year, too, when people have questions, I know when people approach me, we connect them with the right people and we get them questions answered as we go through the year. I also attended the department head meeting, that night I had planning and zoning, which y'all have already seen that this morning, I got up to AMC, did a couple drainage seminars, and then participated in the MCIT annual meeting, and then last week, at the end of the week, we had our Blue Earth County Township Officers Meeting, and Lyle, it was Lyle's last meeting, he unfortunately did not win his reelection, and had a few words to say, but he has done a great job for the townships and planning and zoning here in Blue Earth County years ago, but my understanding was forty years, is that what I heard, somebody say forty years, so, good for him and his retirement, and that, and then just some other road issues and a couple of planning and zoning things that are coming up, Mr. Chair, that's my report.
Thank you. Mark?
Okay, well, then, yeah, on the, I have a label, it is truth and taxation meeting we had on the third of December, and then did have the department heads meeting on the fourth of December, and then, of course, our quarterly meeting, township meeting, and on the twelfth of December, and I've been busy otherwise, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Eddie?
December third, the budget hearing, on the fifth, I had a TDS Personnel Committee meeting, on the eighth, I headed up to AMC, and on the twelfth, the townships, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ed?
I also attended the budget hearing, on the fourth, we had a department head meeting, and then I had a Blue Earth Nicola County Safe Roads meeting, that evening I had a Highway One Six Nine corridor annual winter meeting, on the fifth, I had a regional TZD committee meeting, I also went up to the AMC conference on the eighth, came back on the eleventh, attended the township meeting, and then yesterday I had a MRCI board meeting and a Transportation Alliance board meeting, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you. My report is similar, December third, the P and Z and Drainage Update Meeting, I attended the budget hearing, participated in the NACO meetings on the fourth through the sixth, sustainable water management, we toured at the dam when they had the earthquake out there, also spent about half a day touring and hearing directly from their emergency manager on their 2017 fire, I've learned we don't want to have a fire in Blue Earth County to that magnitude, they lost seven thousand structures in one night, evacuated a hundred thousand people overnight, unfortunately twenty-two lives were lost, and a fire that moved twenty miles in four hours, covered over thirty-six thousand acres altogether, so interesting listening to their emergency management on that, also attended the AMC annual meeting, participated in the board meeting, the Ag and Rural Conference, as well as in environmental policy, I was elected chairman of the environment policy. On the twelfth, in the morning, we had a drainage working group meeting, and then that was also the day that AMC and leadership met with the commissioners, up in St. Paul, we met with the leadership of Bowser, MPCA, and DNR, that afternoon was a soil water conservation district meeting that I participated in, as well as the township officers that was mentioned. On the thirteenth, Julie and I went down to Martin County, they had three retiring commissioners, had a little reception for them, we went down there to wish them well, and then sixteenth, yesterday, meetings with the elected officials at the Ponderosa, as well as a JD forty-eight landowner meeting. That concludes my report. At this time, on the agenda, it would be appropriate for a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We are in recess, thank you.
Good job, Mr. Chair.